...brings us to Article 20.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Dunn, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. This article changes the name of the body from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. As individuals, we would be, become members of the Select Board. And you could, if you were interested, you could address me as Selectman Dunn, and you could address Mrs. Mahon as Selectwoman Mahon, and these would all be appropriate. The proposal came to us as a ten-voter article, meaning that ten voters signed a petition to put this article on the warrant. Two of them, Clarissa Rowe and Naomi Greenfield, spoke at the hearing. They made the case that calling us selectmen is a persisting unconscious bias, a cause of unconscious bias. When we look at this body of people, we shouldn't need to, we should try to remove this source of unconscious bias, that it is a group of men. And that argument was very persuasive for us. Some of the feedback we got was that this article didn't go far enough, and that there are other gendered terms in our bylaws. And we agreed with that feedback, and so in the special town meeting, there will be, there's an article with a broader scope. We also got some feedback after the hearing that Select Board is not sufficiently euphonious. The term is new to us, and for some, it grates on the ear. The proposed alternatives to Select Board that I've heard kicked around have their roots in city government, or in governance structures common in New York. Select Board is preferable to those choices because it hews closely to our historical roots as a New England town meeting form of government. We would like to stay close to our historic roots. We are taking the historical name and making an update, and we are aligning it for our time. We do not support naming changes that take us away from our history and towards the traditions of others. Thank you for your support.
I'm here as the warrant article originator, along with Naomi. And I just ask you, please, to support this. I'm a 70-year-old woman. I did this for women that are younger, including a lovely four-year-old in the hallway at the beginning of the meeting. Please support this. It's time, and keep at the Select Board. Thank you so much.
Yep, ma'am.
Naomi Greenfield, Precinct 15. Thank you, Selectman Dunn, for your strong endorsement, and to the whole Board of Selectmen for their endorsement, and to my friend Clarissa Rowe for helping me bring this to the floor. This is my first time speaking in town meeting. I spent all of last year listening, mostly to people who don't look like me. And now I feel ready to use my voice to address all of you tonight. When I was growing up, my brother used to like to tell riddles, the ones that had trick-surprise endings but seemed obvious when the punchline was revealed. This one was an old favorite. A man and his son are driving in a car one day, when they get into a fatal accident. The man is killed instantly. The boy is knocked unconscious, but he is still alive. He's rushed to the hospital and will need immediate surgery. The doctor enters the emergency room, looks at the boy, and says, "I can't operate on this boy. He is my son." So the question in this riddle is, how is this possible? It has stumped people for generations.[220.12][220.12](Laughter.) But the answer is simple: the doctor is the boy's mother. The fact that this riddle continues to stump us illustrates just how common gender stereotypes are, and how deeply rooted they are in our minds and in our understanding for what roles women play in society. Fast forward 30 years, and my brother is married to a female surgeon.[242.51][242.51](Laughter.) And I am standing in front of a Board of Selectmen that is not all men. The warrant article I'm speaking to today offers this simple request: let's take a step away from language that indoctrinates our gender stereotypes. Let's use language to codify what we're doing in practice, which is to open the door to the voices of the people of Arlington, both women and men. Arlington would not be the first town to recognize the need for this name change. Over 30 Massachusetts towns, Wakefield, Brookline, Newton, and Amherst, to name a few, have switched to non-gendered names which better reflect the duties and composition of their groups. Just as we as society have switched to police officers and firefighters, it's time to change the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. This change will reflect our commitment to diversity and inclusion, and will hopefully pave the way for more people of all genders and all backgrounds to have a voice in our community. Last year, I sat in Town Hall as a newly sworn-in town meeting member, still trying to figure out where to sit and what buttons to press on my clicker, when I should speak and when I should listen. And as I looked out to the seats at the front of the hall facing me, I was struck to see just how many of those seats were filled by men, and just how many of the speakers were. And if you noticed this evening, I could count on half of my hand how many were women this evening. I was proud to see Diane Mahon among the sea of men, and was always impressed when Christine Bonjournois was called to voice a perspective from the Health and Human Service Department, which she did with confidence and incredible depth of understanding. But both of these women were outnumbered. The body of leadership in our town government is overwhelmingly imbalanced in its representation of 50% of our population. I know that changing the name of our board from Selectmen will not immediately change the people who fill those seats, but maybe it soon will. Because words matter, language matters, and ultimately, representation matters. I would like to briefly address the response to this article, which has been, on the whole, overwhelmingly positive and supportive. You will, however, hear an argument for a different name change, an idea that reminds me of the many times, as a woman, I have suggested an idea only to have it ignored on its merits while a similar idea suggested by a man is given more weight and acknowledgement.[389.31][389.31](Laughter.) I'm guessing many of the few women in the room have had that experience as well. You will also hear the argument that we wait to consider this name change, that we spend town manager time, selectman time, resident time, and taxpayer money to punt this decision to a future date. To that argument, I would love to say that the time is now in 2018. The truth is, 2018 is already too late. This change is long overdue. So I ask that you consider this article as-is, submitted by a woman, supported by women, and by gender non-conforming residents in our town. I also ask that you make this choice today, in 2018, not a year from now, and I hope you will vote yes and be proud of the modest and meaningful change in our town. And I hope you'll be proud by the result. I believe we need to use a language that represents what we strive for and not what we used to be. We need to show girls like my seven-year-old daughter that we want to hear their voices. We need to show them that if they choose to run, and if the people of Arlington elect them, that there is a seat at the table for them as a member of the Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.[468.11][468.11](Applause.) Mr. Schlickman?
I do. Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. I move my substitute motion, which was placed on seats on Monday. Thank you. We had mailmen, we now have letter carriers. We had patrolmen, we now have police officers. Cities that had aldermen now have city councils, and councilmen are now counselors. Now we have before us a vote to rename our Board of Selectmen to the Select Board with the best of motives. We want to eliminate gender-specific titles. We want everyone to look at our town government and see themselves in these roles. We have selectmen, but adopting the recommended vote under Article 20 will leave us with selectmen. The Selectmen's recommended vote says, "Members of the Select Board may be addressed as Select Board Member, Board Member, Select Woman, or Selectman." And we'll have four of them. A Select Board populated with selectmen? Why? Can't we do better? Not only does Select Board sound ugly, not only does Select Board preserve the gender-based title of selectman, but a Select Board isn't descriptive of the function of the Board. It's confusing, and confusions suppress citizen involvement. The Board of Assessors handles assessments, the Zoning Board of Appeals handles zoning appeals, the Finance Committee oversees town finances. A Select Board? What do they do? Walk over to Whole Foods and select avocados? Why should our neighbors care enough to go out and vote for a Select Board? Massachusetts uses a form of government that is unique to New England, and requires some level of explanation for the uninitiated. People who are new to New England towns have no concept of what a Board of Selectmen does. Unlike city councils and town councils in the rest of the country, selectmen have no legislative power. We are the legislature. The Selectmen are the administrative board, the executive branch of our town government. Five selectmen combine to perform the functions of a mayor, so five selectmen are each one-fifth of a mayor. They are essentially a board of fractional administrators. The Selectmen supervise the town manager and the operations of the town. Several states have boards of supervisors, either at municipal or county level. A Board of Supervisors would convey meaning, and members would carry the gender-neutral title of supervisor. We have abolished the Middlesex County Government and its Administrative Board of County Commissioners. We could have a Board of Town Commissioners, generating another more descriptive and gender-neutral title for its members. I could have written a substitute motion that offered my choice of names to Town Meeting, but I don't think our Board's new name should be the choice of one person, a few folks, or half the town meeting members in the hall. We should put the question to the community, that is the intent of my substitute motion. We are a town filled with creative people, a town filled with people with a tremendous sense of history. We should enlist this talent to generate suggestions for a new and meaningful name and bring them to the people. We can gather interested residents into Town Hall. We can present the leading options to the residents in the form of a survey. We can do this, the Arlington way. If you look at the Selectmen's commentary, they tell you that over 30 towns have made this change. Amherst was the first. We're following a flock of mostly tiny towns who followed Amherst's lead? To this, I offer the wisdom of a famous philosopher who said, "If all your friends jumped off a bridge, would you jump too?" And in the midst of towns jumping off of bridges, Amherst just voted to get rid of their Select Board. They adopted a city form of government, eliminating Town Meeting. They joined the string of cities to pretend to be towns, call themselves towns, and call their city council a town council. Amherst, the town that brought Select Boards to Massachusetts, they won't have one. Arlington is a town rich in Revolutionary War history, that named itself after a Civil War battlefield. Let's not become a town, rich in Revolutionary War history, that named itself after a Civil War cemetery with a poorly-named administrative board, because that's what Amherst chose for their defunct board. Please open this to creative suggestions, citizen participation, and support my substitute motion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Yontar? Did you have a substitute? Yeah, where'd he go? I was looking for... The other guy who had a substitute. Yontar. Timor Yontar. Oh, there you are. Sorry, I didn't see ya.
Can you all hear me? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Timor Kai Yontar, Precinct 7. I move my substitute motion, which was placed on your chairs on Monday. Thank you. I am no fan of public speaking, so I'll be brief. I fully support the use of gender-neutral terminology for all of our town's governmental bodies and officials. It's about time that we made this change. Now, as the chairman of the Board of Selectmen noted on Monday, if Town Meeting doesn't get something quite right, we can always fix it later. But I think that renaming the Board of Selectmen is a change that will endure for many, many years, so let's get it right the first time. I have submitted a substitute motion for warrant Article 20. Yes, submitted by a man, but supported by women and men. I have submitted it because I find the proposed name, Select Board, to be, in a word, awkward. Board of what? Most Boards are Boards of something, of directors, of trustees, of overseers, or of selectmen. But Select Board by itself makes it sound like our town's executive body is a piece of wood. It seems silly. And although dozens of other towns in the Commonwealth have renamed their Boards of Selectmen as Select Boards, we need not follow their lead. Instead, I propose the name Town Council to replace Board of Selectmen, and the members thereof would be counselors, replacing the gendered Select Man and Select Woman. Lest anyone be concerned that the term Town Council is somehow problematic, do not worry. The town of Wakefield voted for this name change recently, and the state Attorney General's Office has approved that it is a permissible name to substitute for Board of Selectmen. In sum, let us do the right thing and change the gender-specific name of our executive body, but let us also pay careful consideration to what we rename it to, and favor elegance over jargon. Thank you for your time and your consideration of my motion.
Thank you, sir. I got you, Mr. Pluso. Ma'am. Yep. No, not you, Ms. Seuss. You're next. Not you. Her.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Mel Goldsight, Precinct 20, and Vice Chair of the new LGBTQIA+ Rainbow Commission. I agree with everything that Naomi said, though the doctor could have been the child's other father, or any of a (laugh) a number of other family (laugh). But the point stands. I agree that the presence of a woman on the Board is a great model for girls growing up right now. It plants the seeds that a career in politics is a viable opportunity for them. And while some people who are not male are clearly not discouraged by running for office for Select Man, some will be, and that's a problem we absolutely should correct as soon as possible. We're already behind the times, as they have said, and if we want children of all genders to feel free to run for office, we must remove this outdated gender language now. Politics works best when everyone is free to participate. It's not enough to remove prohibitions, such as finally allowing everyone to vote. We need to actively welcome everyone's contributions. In addition to this change being important for girls and women, it's important for transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming folks, too. This is, I see this as a continuation of the work that Town Meeting has done over the past couple of years. In 2016, we added gender identity and expression to the nondiscrimination bylaw. Last year, we established the Rainbow Commission and passed the Trust Act and Sanctuary Town Resolution. And now we can continue that work for an inclusive Arlington by changing the Board of Selectmen to the gender-neutral name Select Board. Please do not postpone this change for another year. It's been such a long time coming, and we need to take the step now to encourage girls, women, gender non-conforming, and non-binary folks, to, in fact, people of all genders, to participate fully in our civic life. And I'm just going to put in a quick little plug. Another continuation of this work is in the November election to vote against repealing the transgender equal access law. All of these steps that we take (applause) all come together to make Arlington more equal, more accessible, and more inclusive. I also just want to say, while I'm here, if you need to reach the Rainbow Commission, our email is rainbow@town.arlington MA.us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Seuss? All three things. All three things that are before us. All three things that are before us, the motions and the recommended vote. Everything's before us. Yep.
Hi, Jennifer Seuss, Precinct 3. I stand in support of the original motion and opposed to the two substitute motions. About 10% of Massachusetts towns have already switched to calling their executive board a Select Board. And that's about 10% of the largest towns and 10% of the smallest towns. Besides, no town has switched its names, and I didn't know about Wakefield until tonight, has done so to anything else but a Select Board. The term reflects the historical name used by Massachusetts towns, and because of that historical connection, it requires no additional explanation. If you live in Massachusetts, I get it. If you come from outside Massachusetts, it's harder. I looked at the boards of the largest 72 towns in Massachusetts. This was really fun. These are towns that have at least 15,000 people. Seven of those towns, about 10%, have a Select Board, including Brookline, Amherst, Dartmouth, Winchester, Concord. Of the 57 towns with five Board Members, 10% of them, 10 of them, 17% had no women representation at all. 26% of them, 45%, had only one woman, including ourselves. 19% of them, 33% had two women. Only five of the largest towns that have these five-member boards, three of them have a majority of women, with a grand total of three women out of five. The smaller the Board, the worse the ratios are. Of the 13 largest communities with only three Board Members, nine of them, 70%, have no women representation at all. So clearly, we have work to do to make women believe that they can be included in town governance, and to make communities more welcoming of female leadership. So why reject the substitute motions? And as it's been made clear, people who are putting forth the substitute motions are not doing so because they're against gender inclusivity. Anyone who knows me knows that I'm a big believer in community outrage and stakeholder engagement. That's my big thing. Stakeholder engagement serves many things. Having multiple voices at the table almost always improves the final decision. It's hard for a small group to make decisions and to fully understand all the subtleties. There is also a big value in giving people an opportunity both to be heard and to hear other people's perspectives. Without that opportunity, people often believe that their opinion is the right opinion, and if the decision is made contrary to their opinion, they think that it's because their opinion hasn't been heard. So getting everybody in the room, hearing everyone's perspective, is incredibly valuable. So, I'm a big believer in community outrage and stakeholder engagement. But there are different standards when it comes to questions of inclusivity. When we were deciding what to do about our growing enrollment crisis, it was important to go to the community, publicly weigh the pros and the cons of all the options available to us, to find the optimal solution. One that isn't perfect, but produces best outcome with the least pain. But for issues of inclusivity, optimization is the wrong approach. Suppose that 10% of our town residents came to Town Meeting and said, "The term we use is offensive to them, makes them feel slighted, makes them feel not included in town life." In such a case, it would be inappropriate to hold a public forum and try to find a solution that optimized everyone's perspectives. It is still, however, important to hear everyone's perspective, so I'm completely in favor of that, both majority and the minority, so that we can all get into the room and hear each other, and hear the concerns, and hear the perspectives. But I put to you that this room is actually the room that cares most. We are the stakeholders. So having this discussion in this room is incredibly valuable. I believe that the substitute motion to study the issue is, feels like a delaying tactic. The motion to change the name to Town Council is confusing. It sounds too much like Council, for example. We should choose a name that requires no explanation and best honors our history. A name that most every other Massachusetts town who has made this change has chosen, which is Select Board. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. LaCourte?
Hanny LaCourte, Precinct 15. I know I'm over quota, but you knew I had to say something about this one. For the entire seven years that I served on the Board of Selectmen, the members of the Board of Selectmen, the majority of them were women. I served with Diane Mahon and Kathy, whose last name I'm not going to remember now, and with Ms. Rowe, Kathy Diaz, and with Clarissa Rowe. We did not, at the time, think to request this change. I think something about swamps and alligators. And there was a lot of stuff in front of us that felt urgent, and that we just never got around to this one. I think this change is really important, and a part of the reason I think it's important is because when Clarissa and I left the Board, we assumed that somewhere along the line, more women would be elected to the Board, and they haven't been. And if what is standing in the way of the women in this room, for example, who should be seeing themselves as future selectmen, considering, or future select persons, excuse me, who should be seeing themselves in that position, is the name of the position, let's just get that out of the way. That said, as someone who comes from a state that has nowhere near the history that this town does, who grew up in a town that was founded in 1938, I've become very fond of history. And keeping our connection to the history of the idea of selecting a group of people to make decisions by retaining the name Select Board feels really important to me. So hopefully, I haven't been too repetitious of anybody else, and I appreciate your listening to me, and I hope you will support the main motion and neither of the substitutes.
Thank you. Mr. Lennard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Lennard, Precinct 17. Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, by researching this particular article, I came across some information which I'd like to share with you, but not possibly sway your opinion on the article one way or the other. According to information that I have, back in 1976, the present town manager at that time changed the positions of the police chief and the fire chief in an effort, as he called it, to revitalize the economy, to Director of Fire Services and Director of Police Services. And that title stayed, as far as I can research, to roughly about 2002. Now, as we know, we always considered Chief Ryan and Chief Jefferson chiefs, and that's what we call them, but I guess according to the information I found, they were called Director of Police Services and Director of Fire Services. Eventually, what particularly happened was, in 2002, Home Rule legislation was filed to turn around and bring it back to square one, and bring the names back to Police Chief and to Fire Chief. One of the reasons I remember was Chief Ryan standing off to my right at one particular time and mentioning that in situations like the FBI would be calling up and saying, "No, I want to speak to the Police Chief. I don't want to speak to the Director of Police Services. You might not be the one that I'm interested in talking to." So I guess what I'm getting at, Mr. Moderator, is, I'm not saying I'm far or against this particular article, but one thing that's not being discussed is, whatever name is given to the Board moving forward, how do we get that message out that from day one, it is no longer called the Selectmen? And how do we possibly save people like the women who work in the Town Hall from saying, "Trust us. We are the old Selectmen's office. We are the people you want to talk to so that the town doesn't have to go through another embarrassing situation." I think I'd like to hear from the people. All we've heard so far from people is, "Well, the name should be called," and et cetera. But how do we get the message out across the country? And please, let's not just say, "Well, we'll throw it on the internet and just hope for the best." People are going to be calling into our town and saying, "I'd like to speak to somebody with authority, but I don't know if this so-called Board," or whatever, "is the type of person that can handle my problem." Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
I hope someone's thought of that. Mr. Tully? I have you, Ms. Stamps.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Tully, Precinct 14. I've never been more afraid to be a straight white guy than tonight. I stand in support of Mr. Schlickman's motion. I think it's important to understand what we're debating here. I think everybody agrees that the time has probably come, you know, it's appropriate to rename this Board and to find a suitable name for it. So I don't think the debate is whether we should change it or not change it. I think the debate is, what's the most suitable name? I think giving us a little bit of time to come up with something that may be a little more euphonious, as Chairperson Dunn indicated, might make a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Greeley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Greeley, Precinct 11.
Kevin Greeley, Precinct 11. I am a white, sixty-seven-year-old man who, for thirty years, has been called a Select Man, who was raised by a father who was twenty-one years a Select Man, and I was originally against this article. I've seen the error of my ways, especially because of the women that I have served with on the Board of Selectmen. And of course, the one we all call the Mayor of Arlington, sitting behind us here, Marie Kripelka. They don't call any of us men on the Board, the Mayor of Arlington, but she is known as that. To me, there's no more gender connotation to "Selectmen" than there is to "human." But then again, I'm a white, sixty-seven-year-old man who's lived with a father who went through this. If it is true that this change will bring one more woman to the Board of the quality of the five I have served with, then we need to do this. I would add one more thing. Please keep the word "select." For those of you not familiar, this tradition of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen, goes back to pre-colonial times, when churches, where the first Europeans come over, and the churches are the center of the community. At the end of religious services, if there were a civic matter, they would hold a town meeting, as we do now here, what is it, three hundred years later? In that town meeting, they would select a person, a man at the time, to investigate and return the following week after religious services. To this day, the people in Arlington select the five of us to serve. I don't think if we take the word "Board of Selectmen" and change it to "Select Board" does any less in terms of describing what we do. How we behave describes what we do, and how we have behaved all these years describes what we do. For me, in the end, I am a Select Man, and I'd be proud to be a member of a Select Board. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Deist?
I move the question and all issues related there, too.
We have motion to terminate debate on the article and all issues before, including both of these motions. We're going to take an electronic vote. It's a two-thirds vote to terminate debate. And go ahead, vote. One to terminate, two to continue speaking. It's an affirmative vote, one hundred and sixty-nine in the affirmative, thirty-six in the negative. It is a two-thirds vote, and I so declare it. That brings us to the article itself and the motions. We have before us the recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen for now. Then we have Mr. Yonter's motion to change it to Town Council, and we have Mr. Schlickman's motion to punt for a year. So what I'm going to do, first, we're going to vote on Mr. Yonter's to change it to Town Council. Then, depending what happens with that, we're going to go to Mr. Schlickman's to set up a committee and come back to a further meeting. Then, depending upon what happens to both of those, we're going to go to the final recommended vote, be it substituted or not. Is that clear? Okey-dokey. The first vote is on Mr. Yonter's change it to a Town Council. So as soon as Mr. Lafford's ready, if you're in favor of Mr. Yonter's to change it to Town Council, instead of Board, press one for yes, two for no. That's a negative vote, one hundred and eighty-three in the negative, twenty-three in the positive. So twenty-three yeses, one hundred and eighty-three nos. That motion fails. That brings us to Mr. Schlickman's motion to set up a committee to report back in the future on the name change. If you're in favor of setting up a committee, please press one for yes and two for no. Go ahead and vote. Twenty-one in the positive, one hundred and eighty-five in the negative. It's a negative vote, and that motion also fails. That brings us to the recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen to change it to Select Board. If you're in favor of the recommended vote, please press one for yes and two for no, and go ahead and vote now. It's an affirmative vote, one hundred and eighty-five in the poll. Let me announce it. I got to announce it. One hundred and ninety-five in the affirmative, six in the negative. It's a positive vote. One ninety-five to six. Mr. Dunn, that brings us to Article 21, the chair of the Select Board, Mr. Dunn.